I call the budget hearing to order. I call the Young Community Schools budget hearing to report.
All right. So, thank you. We're going to start tonight with our budget hearing. And we'll have Jennifer come up do a review of the proposed budget that she presented also last week during our special meeting. And she's going to review some of the information from last week. We do not have anybody signed up or comment for the budget. So after that, then we adjourn and go into our regular board meeting.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Glad to see so many interested people. Awesome. And so I want to just go over a little bit about how we got here, what we went over last week. We went over a little detail. So we added a budget session last week so that we could prepare for tonight's budget adoption. And we looked at the general fund in a lot of detail. We have not looked at the other four funds. I'll talk about those individually. It was to give you guys an opportunity to ask questions to make sure that we were prepared for approval. And I've received a lot of questions. I think if I answered them all to your satisfaction. And so last week, we went over some of the, I just wanted to mention some of the things we went over because I'm not going to repeat. I will have some duplicate slides tonight just for the purpose of budget adoption. But we explained how the prototypical funding model works and how staffing units are generated from that model. We talked about state funding and for staff and versus the actual cost of staff that we pay. We talked about, we did a, I shared a breakdown of revenue expenditures. And I did a detail of the categories showing 23, 24 current year compared to what we're budgeting for next year. Shared cost-saving measures to date and talked about the additional work that we need to do to make additional cuts. And I shared the four-year forecast, which is required as part of the budget process. So. Do I have your due attention? I don't know. You have. Thank you. Okay. So to talk a little bit about the budget journey from April to current, and I don't have exact timelines on here because a lot of these things are still happening and they started from the beginning. So, so in April, as you know, we had a double levy failure. We had rifts, a lot of staff layoffs. We had a community survey go out and had a forum with, I believe it was over 400 participants to help us make informed decisions about cuts that we knew we needed to make. We, I've been doing budget development actually since before the levy failed. That usually starts around January, February with enrollment projections for the next year. And we've been having ongoing budget cut discussions and decisions being made. Ongoing negotiations. I've mentioned these things a few times in other meetings too that we have, we're still open with two bargaining groups. So, so the outcome is unknown at this time. Communications with external partners. We've been talking to OSPI and ESD because they're very well aware of our financial situation. They started communicating with us as soon as our levy failed about our financial condition going forward. We came to you a couple of weeks ago and asked for you to approve a resolution that petitioned us to budget receivables with OSPI. And what that means is that we're budgeting future revenues that we don't have yet, that we won't have next year. And the purpose of that is to request to go into binding conditions so that the state has more, it's not complete oversight for the first couple of years, but they, we do meet with them quarterly and we provide them monthly budget status reports. And then we had the budget study session that I just talked about last week to prepare for tonight. And now we're at the point of budget adoption. So again, these things are things that are not new. I've mentioned them a few times, but I do want to go over them for the purposes of the public hearing. So have a, had a double levy failure. And these are all the contributing factors to the reason our fund balance has, is so low and has been depleting over the last several years. So double levy failure. I think that's the most commonly reason understood by most people. A lot of people don't understand all the other factors that have contributed to our fund balance decline. So I want to talk about those a little bit. Paying higher salaries than provided by the state. We talked about that. And therefore, we know the state is underfunding basic education. And that's one of the areas. We had SIR funding expire. So the funding is completely gone. But as we know, the needs of our students are still very real to a lot of people. And so we could not cut all those positions in one year. We knew that there was more cuts to be made, but we didn't want to impact the entire system at one time. So we were going to make those cuts over more than one year, not knowing that our levy was going to fail the following year. Large reductions to local effort assistance. And this is funding that we receive in addition to our property tax dollars. But we don't get it if we don't pass our levy. But in addition to not getting it for '25, it's also been reduced over 50%, by over 50% since 2018. We used to get 4.2 million in 2018. And for this year, we're getting 1.7. So it's reduced by $2.5 million. So that is just $2.5 billion out of our budget right there. Cost of goods and services, talk about this a lot. Inflation keep increasing and the, the increases are outpacing the state funding by quite a bit. And it seems like every year, the gap gets more significant because our costs just keep going up and up. And got a little bit of relief from the state this year, but it certainly wasn't enough. Our enrollment has reduced since COVID. Every year that we had reduced enrollment after COVID, it depleted our fund balance a little bit more because we weren't getting those revenues. And then subsidized increased costs. So with special education, that is something that the state does not nearly fully fund. And we have to use our local levy dollars to subsidize that. And we, we were at $3.2 million in the current year of, of underfunding by the state for our special ed program, which were required to carry out because it's required by state and federal law. So we, this year, I believe it went up to 3.6. That's just our enrollment is increasing and the costs are going up for everything, for all of our contracted staff. So we're hoping for some relief in this next legislative session. They are giving some relief on the path, but we don't know how much that'll help us because we have to be over a certain percentage of enrollment to basic ed, special ed, and basic ed enrollment. This is a slide you saw last week. This is just to show our historical fund balance depletion. So this shows five years. In the last couple of years, you can see that's the green and the blue. And those percentages are the percent of our fund balance to our expenditures. And that's where we're required to meet that minimum fund balance of 5%. So you can see that we have not, we're not projected to end this year. We didn't end last year meeting our minimum fund balance policy. Okay. And this is to show you a fund balance four-year history. I thought it was, was a good picture to show. It shows, because if you look at the very bottom, it shows what our actual fund balance was in '21, '22. We had $8.6 million. Actual for '22, '23, it went down to $7 million. Projected for '23, '24, 5.9. And then because of our levy failure, our projected budget for '24, '25 is a negative 1.3 million. Are there any questions so far? No. Um, I want to talk about some, some budget assumptions and unknowns. So when we're preparing the budget, there's a lot of things we don't know. Things that could happen over the next year or could happen next week that impact the budget and the decisions and assumptions we put into the, to the budget we came up with. So I just wanted to talk about some of these. Enrollment fluctuations. We don't know what enrollment's going to do. Just to be conservative, I just did a flat rollout projection. So what that does is it may increase certain grade levels, but overall, it's pretty flat. There's not really any increase in enrollment projections compared to the current year actuals. I already mentioned, we have current negotiations going on. So we don't know what's going to happen. We had to make some assumptions when we built the budget. Staffing levels and programs. That's going to depend on our remaining deficits. So we're just going to have to continue monitoring our financial situation every month and, and continue looking at our staffing levels and programs to see what we need to continue cutting. And no, no new revenue streams is the assumption we made. It says no new revenue streams, but the assumption is that we don't have any because we don't know what's going to happen during session. And again, legislative session impacts. That's a huge one. I'm always hopeful, but lately, I've been commonly disappointed the last few years. So we're hoping that they come through and give us some relief. Food service participation and transportation ridership. Those are really hard to project since COVID. Since we've come back, they're, they're not, they're not, it's not a regular projection like you would have before COVID happened because things changed so drastically. Our, our transportation ridership has been down. So I was conservative on the revenue assumptions for that. Inflation, I've talked about already. Continued cost increases. Our special ed and safety net award. We're receiving almost $1 million this year. And that's the largest award at safety net that we've received. And what this funding is the result of is our, our special ed high-cost kids. So we have some kids that cost a lot more than, than others. And we could submit for reimbursement from the state for extra funding. And we have some out-of-state placements. And that's why we're getting so much back because we're getting reimbursed a lot of those costs. So that can decrease or increase significantly just with one or two kids based on their placements and their needs. So that's really hard to project. So I typically project low on that. I believe it projected 500,000 this year. And we have received less than that before. So fundraisers. We have an amazing community of people that are willing to donate and have been contacting us, but we don't know what that's going to look like. And we hadn't received any yet, so we didn't put those in the budget. And then a levy passage. That's one of the biggest fundamentals, I think, right now. Okay. Ending fund balance budget. So we went over this last week just to break down. I've talked about the categories, the restrictions there in the first four numbers. Those are things that we have no control over. Those are our carryover from current year. There are inventory, there are things that we've paid this year that we're not going to, that we're going to have to expend next year. And some carryovers. So we can't access those dollars at all. So they're restricted and they're put into a different account. And then we have our minimum fund balance policy. That's 4.7 million. And I'm not saying that we don't have any control over that because it is a board policy. So board policies can change. But I, I wouldn't advise decreasing it from the 5% that we have in place right now. I know that some districts do have a range and they monitor that very closely. But I wouldn't advise for a size, for a district our size to go any lower than 5%. But it's something we do have control over. Unassigned fund balance and ending fund balance. So what those are saying, really, I already talked about the 1.3 million deficit that we can't submit a balanced budget this year, which is going to put us in binding conditions. But that unassigned fund balance, if we decreased our minimum fund balance policy to zero and didn't have anything in that, in that account, it would still be a deficit of 2.6 million. So basically, we're not meeting our, but I, in the accounting of our fund balance and our budget, I have to put an amount in there so it shows a negative in unassigned. Okay. My slides are out of order. So I tried to think of a way to, to explain this so that everybody could understand where we're at with our, the amount of cuts that we've made and how that relates to our current ending fund balance in our budget and our revenues and expenditures that we projected for next year. So we're projecting ending expenditures this year of 98.8 million. Okay. We have an average 10-year increase in expenditures from year to year of actual expenditures of about 5.2 million. So some years are up to seven or eight million. Some years are three or four million, but the average is 5.2. Our projected expenditures without cuts, if we didn't make any cuts and we prepared our budget for next year, if we increased it by 5.2 million, we'd, we'd beat 104 million of expenditures. If you look at our current budget, we budgeted expenditures at 95.5 million. So that's a difference of 8.5 million. So what I wanted to talk about a little bit is the projection of the increase is, like I just mentioned, it's based on an average. Some years it's more, some years it's less. So the 5.2 is just an average. And the cuts that we projected are based on assumptions. We had to make assumptions when we're coming up with the cost. We had to make assumptions in salary increases. We had to make assumptions in, in sports and a lot of different things. So the difference, the difference of the cuts that we've made is not going to equal the difference in, it's not going to be the eight, it's not going to agree to the 8.5 million. Because we talked last week about cutting 10-point million estimated cuts already. So I just wanted to make that point. Okay. And these are repeat slides from last week. I did add one expenditures by program. So we went over revenues by major categories already. They were listed out in more detail comparing current year to, to next year's budget. But just to show that most of our funding comes from state general purpose. That's our basic ed apportionment. And that's also our local effort assistance that I talked about earlier, that, that 1.7 million. And then we have our state special ed makes up the largest portion, the next largest portion at 20%. And then we have federal special purpose at 7%. And what, what, what's special purpose in state and federal? The state is our special ed, our non-basic, non-basic ed portion of special ed and all of our categorical programs like LAPA, TBIP, and HICAP. And our transportation operations. And then the federal special purpose is our special ed, our federal special ed and our title grants and our federal food service reimbursements. Those are, those are our main federal programs. And then we have, so local taxes is a 6%. When I did this presentation last year, it was at 13%. So you can see the difference in the tax amount has gone down quite a bit. And then expenditures by object. This is just another way to show the expenditures and what we're spending our money on other than program. Our salaries and benefits are those big, biggest ones, the, the blue and the gray and the light gray there make up 82% of our total expenditures for the, for our budget for next year. So the remaining 18% is MSOCs. That's all of our materials and supplies, all of our contracted services and other purchase services, travel and any capital outlay that we have. And then our expenditures by program. So we spend most of our money, just like we receive most of it in basic ed, we spend most of our money on regular instruction. That's our basic ed instruction. We spend the next largest portion on support services. That's all of our food service, transportation, custodial maintenance, technology and all district-wide support. And then we have our special education. We have, and then we have smaller amounts for our CTE program. And compensatory means title lap and our other state category. Okay. Last week, I provided you with a detail of the four-year forecast. I want to talk about this a little bit because it's, it's really just storytelling exercise. It's hard enough to predict one year's budget, let alone four. So what a lot of districts do is they, they just assume that nothing different is going to happen. We're not going to have any legislative relief. We're not going to have a lot of increased enrollment. It's pre-flat enrollment. It's a very minor increase in expenditures and revenues. We are, I did make some assumptions that I, I assumed that we're going to pass our levy next year. And I also made assumptions that this is as if everything stayed the same, so no additional cuts are being made. We know we're going to have to make cuts. But this four-year forecast is as if nothing has changed. So you can see our fund balance, negative any fund balance compared to the 1.3 that we're going into this year. Next year, with the cuts we've made, it'll be 7.5 million. And then if we didn't make any additional cuts and our levy did pass, the following year, it would be a little bit less. But we know we're going to make cuts. So, and then the following year, again, it would be a little bit less since we're receiving our levy money now. And this is a required disclosure that we have to do during budget adoption. So it's, all it's showing is that our materials, supplies and operating costs, known as MSOCs, that we are spending at least as much as the state is providing for us. So you can see that we're spending almost $2 million for what the state is providing in funding. So that's all that's showing. Okay. So that is the general fund. Are there any questions about that before we move on to the other funds? Okay. So as I talked about, there are a lot of assumptions that we make and have to put into the general fund budget development. That's not really the case with the other four funds. They're pretty much, we have specific revenue that comes in. It can only be used for specific purposes. So they're pretty straightforward. The first one is our capital projects fund. Is there nothing else on this?
So it did not pull in the, the words.
That's okay. The pictures are nice. So the first one, you can see the picture, capital projects. The next one is the debt service fund. You see the dollar sign. Transportation, that's one of our buses. And this is our, our students on the ASB. So capital projects. So capital projects is restricted really for construction of buildings, remodeling of buildings. There's certain projects like roof replacements and replacement of, of your entire district's carpet, your HVAC systems and larger improvements to building and grounds. And so we have an estimated beginning fund balance of almost $28 million. So these numbers are all based on what projects we start during the year and decide to start. So we build a lot of capacity and expenditures so that if we do start a large project, we don't have to do budget extensions throughout the whole year because you have to do them as soon as you're going to go over your expenditures. So we, I have estimated expenditures of 9.4 million. So I want to talk a little bit about what those are for. We have painting projects that we have to do every year. We have a cycle and Chris manages that and makes sure that our buildings stay painted. That protects the exterior. We have a remodeled project going on in our transportation department. They have outgrown their facility actually quite a while ago. And they've been trying to cram into one little room and they have to have meetings and, and trainings and stuff. So we are remodeling part of the warehouse to build a larger meeting room and space for them. We have some money set aside for growth capacity projects. And that, that comes in like if we need to move a portable from one school to another, it can get quite expensive. And when there's growth somewhere, we have capacity for that. Parking lot improvements. Again, that's on a cycle. We do that every year in different areas. Roof replacements, same thing. There's a cycle for that. And we are putting up digital reader boards. And Chris may be planning on talking about some of this in more detail. And then there's just others set aside for capacity. So we have projects that we are going to be starting. We have the capacity to spend the money with a projected ending fund balance of 19.6 million. And this money is a result of our bond and a result of our bond projects coming in under budget. And then the state funding that comes in as, as a match to some of the expenditures for those projects. Debt service fund. This is simply to collect the taxes to pay off our bond debt and our other outstanding debt. So the money comes in from taxes and then we pay it out twice a year in June and December and June. We pay our principal and interest on our debt. Transportation vehicle. Again, we just received depreciation money from the state on our current fleet of buses. And we have that money then to purchase new buses every year. And we try to, we try to purchase a few each year so we don't have a huge number dropping off our depreciation in one year so we can kind of keep our revenue stream constant. So we buy, we purchase two to four buses depending on how much depreciation we get each year. We just had two new ones come in, I think, today. ASB fund. So this fund, it's financed by the student body. The students run it. They approve all of the expenditures. They get their money from, from fees like ASB cards and, and sports fees, gate receipts and approved fundraising activities. And they're to be used only for the benefit of the students. They're not to be used for any costs for staff at all. So the students approve them, they run it and they, they keep a, a balance. So again, these are much larger expenditures than we've incurred in the past and larger revenues. These numbers are projected by the coaches and advisors that run these programs. I don't make any changes to them. But we have some room for increase because we increased sports fees. So we have some room, capacity expenditure room for additional revenues that we receive. Okay. So that's all of the funds. Are there any questions about the budget adoption before I talk about the budget extension? Okay. So same as last year, we have a general fund budget extension. So anytime we exceed the expenditures that we had adopted for the current year, we have to submit for a budget extension. So this happens due to enrollment changes. We had an increased special ed enrollment, which increased our revenues. Therefore, the expenditures associated with that also increased. We had some unanticipated grant increases and carryover that we weren't expecting. We had an increase in our LEA, our local effort assistance, based on our property values going up a little bit. And then we had increases in costs too. We had class overage and coverage costs, substitutes and MSOC expenses that increased quite a bit. So therefore, we need additional capacity. So we're increasing revenues by 4.5 million and expenditures by 4 million. So we actually have about a $500,000 gain there. So the, we have a resolution along with the budget adoption resolution to approve a budget extension so we can continue and finish out the year at our current rate. Are there any questions? You have two resolutions for approval. One is for the budget adoption and one is for the budget extension here.
You'll take action on those when we get into the regular board meeting.
I get it, yes. I mean, you've answered all 35 of my questions. So I don't have anything additional.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for answering all of our questions.
Yeah. Want to make sure you were prepared and all the changes were made that you would like.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes.
Thank you. Good job.
So do we have any community comments related to the budget hearing?
No, we don't have anybody say that.
So the budget hearing is adjourned. Now we'll move into the regular school board meeting. I now call the 20, or August 22, 2024 Community Schools Board Meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. My name is Debbie Edwards and I am the school board president. Our agenda for this meeting is available on the Young Community Schools website. We receive a packet of information that summarizes agenda items prior to the board meeting. This allows us to read and study the material ahead of time and ask any questions of the superintendent before the meeting. Do I have to have this? Are you ready?
Right.
Okay. 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 Audience, community members, Superintendent Woods. Are there any community comments?
Yes, we have some signed up for non-agenda topics.
Okay. So I'm going to read a statement for the non-agenda items. For community comments that are separate, separated from items on the posted agenda, please understand that the board will not engage in discussion, discussion per policy 1400. The board values and supports the opportunity for community members to share their ideas. However, the non-agenda items, the board will not take action but may refer the issue to the administration for further investigation. Comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker and 15 minutes per topic. Any comments directed at the performance of school, school personnel will not be allowed. Comments that are inappropriate to an open public meeting will be immediately stopped by the board president. Community comments need to be presented in a respectful manner following proper decorum. Distraction of the meeting beyond the open comment period can result in the meeting being recessed. How many, we have?
We have six signed up. And I think you and I had spoken about allowing all six for this evening, even though it would go over the time limit.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Jordan is up first. Uh, Jordan is up first.
Greetings to our Young School Board members. My name is Jordan Harrison. I've been a school counselor at South Republic elementary for eleven years, a citizen of Young Community for five. Most importantly, I'm a parent to three children who attend Young Community Schools, with one enrolled in our self-special education program. I'm speaking on behalf of our YEA members who are here this evening to deliver this message together. And I'm honored to represent the eleven current student-focused school counselors in our district. Our school year starts September third and we're yet as members to have a tentative agreement on a new contract that addresses critical issues that affect our students and colleagues. The current proposed increase of counselors' student caseloads continued inappropriate counselor tasks assigned. A likely increase in additional work tasks will undermine keeping staff and students safe and maintaining consistency, stability and culture in our schools. Personally, I've grown accustomed to such replies when I tell someone I'm an elementary school counselor. Oh, what does an elementary counselor do? Or, I didn't know elementary counselor, uh, school tech counselors. I appreciate the opportunity to explain the nature of my work, however, there is so much still misunderstood or unknown. Washington State has passed two important bills into law in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two respectively to create understanding and support schools and school counselors. First Senate Bill fifty-thirty has led to the statewide mandatory development and implementation of comprehensive counseling programs. Per the American School Counseling, Counseling Association, the most prominent national school counseling organization in the United States, where our professional expertise has come through graduate school training and current district work. A vital part to successful implementation includes eighty percent of time spent on direct and indirect student services and twenty percent on program planning. We have yet to reach that goal despite our highest number of school counselors last year at sixteen point six. Multiple hours are spent outside the contract day and continued inappropriate tasks are still being assigned in some or all buildings, including coordinating testing programs, covering classes when teachers are absent, and coordinating school-wide plans to justify before planned student study teams and response intervention plans. Secondly, House Bill sixteen sixty-four was signed into law providing increases to state basic education program funding for school counselors, among other staff positions. Starting in less than two weeks on September first, counselors will be allotted this funding for one to four hundred and three students for elementary, one to two hundred and fifty-two for middle school and one to one hundred and ninety-seven for high school. Based on young student population estimated, our district would be allotted twenty FTE on the basic education budget, nine more than currently staffed. Three out of four elementary counselors are in new buildings or split between two, heavily multiple types of caseloads for different roles. Overall caseloads would be approximately seven hundred over eight hundred for three of our elementary counselors. Secondary counselors will have between four to four hundred and fifty, with three middle school counselors between two buildings and four high school counselors at the high school with a coverage plan for the central school unknown. Other support positions have been removed, adding more uncertainty regarding additional tasks. A significant statistic to highlight is over seven hundred and fifty mental health referrals were made for young students last school year with over two hundred and fifty supported directly by social workers. So what is the plan to support these high mental health needs for our students in all ten schools? I urge you to ask where is the gap between the twenty and eleven school counselor FTE and how can those impacted receive detailed clarity on the plan? As well as to thoroughly look into the Senate Bill and House Bill. That's how we can most effectively adhere to what is stated in these laws. Lastly, I urge you to give the district bargaining team the authority to reach an agreement with YEA that solves these significant issues and concerns that affect our students. Thank you.
Uh, next up we have Jessica.
Good evening, members of the school board, fellow teachers and staff and valued community members. I stand before you today not just as a concerned parent, teacher or community member, but as an advocate for the future of our children and the dedicated professionals who shape that future. I want to talk about a pressing issue that affects every student, every classroom and every corner of our district. The urgent need for a new and equitable contract for our teachers, counselors and other certified support staff. Our educators are the backbone of our schools. They're the ones who ignite curiosity, foster creativity and instill values that will guide our students throughout their lives. Counselors too play a pivotal role in our students' development. They provide critical support that goes beyond academics, addressing emotional and social needs and helping students navigate their path through school and beyond. As elected officials, you have a fundamental responsibility to represent our community, including our students and to ensure accountability to our community priorities. Have you asked district leadership what is holding up these crucial contract negotiations? And are you aware of the district's proposals that would one, allow class sizes to keep growing unchecked, which dilutes the quality of education each student receives? Two, reduce access to essential subjects such as PE, music, library and art for elementary students, thereby depriving them of a well-rounded education that fosters their full development? And three, creates unsafe conditions in our school buildings for both students and staff, which compromises the very environment in which our children learn and grow. Do these proposals truly represent the most effective learning environment for the children and beyond? And more importantly, do these proposals truly represent our vision or Young Community Schools' vision of a safe, student-centered and collaborative learning environment for our students and staff? As an educator, I understand firsthand the importance of settling a fair contract. But as I'm a parent of three students in Young Community Schools, I am deeply aware of the stakes. I know that creating a learning, by, learning environment where students feel safe, supported and set up for success is paramount. With the start of the school year less than two weeks away, the urgency of our situation could not be clear. We need to rectify these problems and reach a fair and equitable agreement that values and respects our educators and allows them to meet the needs of our students. Your leadership and commitment will be a testament to our community's dedication to its future. Direct the district bargaining team to come to a fair and swift agreement with YEA that addresses the critical issues and concerns at hand. This is not just about resolving contractual matters. It's about ensuring that our students have the best possible start to their school year, supported by the dedicated educators who are essential to their success. Let us demonstrate our commitment to the future of our community by making the right decision today. Educators will continue to do their part to help young students find a place in school, but it's the district's responsibility to make sure students have their resources and every opportunity available to succeed. If you have any questions or would like to discuss this further, I am available. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, when asked to speak tonight, I said I'd think about it, knowing full well that I was gonna turn it down. Turn it down because of the risk of saying something wrong? The risk of ruining relationships and the risk of failing? Driving later with my son, I was coming up with ways to say thanks, but no thanks. When Brody asked me, Dad, are you looking forward to the school year starting? I know I am. I immediately did a double take. My soon-to-be junior, who has begged me since first grade to let him be done with school and start an apprenticeship as an electrician, has always thought school was a big burden. He then replied, last year was the first year everything seemed normal. My teachers were happy. It was a good year. We finally had nothing in the way. I went each day without thinking about how bad things were from sixth to ninth grade. There's nothing in the way, Dad. Nothing can stop us having a good year. I committed right then to sharing his expectations. Twenty-five years in this community, I've experienced so much. This situation is the toughest one yet. I often ask why God chose Young for this hurdle. Now, I am married to a finance director and trust me, I have been well lectured about budget constraints and the stresses they cause. In science, my job is to teach the next generation science standards, to get students to compare all proposals, to meet all criteria and constraints for all variables. This is not easy. If we're asking our students to successfully do it, we surely can too. There are so many connections I've made with so many of you sitting up there, from FFA trips, campaigning, teaching one of you as a student and encouraging me to push the limits when I'm in the PA announcer on what to say towards football officials. These connections are what make this a community. Community is what makes us unique, different and special. It has kept me here for twenty-five years, no matter what bigger opportunities came my way. These kids need upbeat educators to help them forget about the negatives and give them the hope and confidence they need to be successful. As a parent, community member and educator, I stand here tonight and ask everybody in this room to embrace the word community in Young Community Schools and for YEA and YCS to work as a unified body to agree with Brody and let nothing get in the way of coming to an agreement and giving kids the stress-free, refreshed faces they deserve to see on September third.
Liz.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to address you today. I address you as the elementary educator, a parent of two South Worth students, a homeowner and a constituent. I believe in our schools and I've been proud to be a member of this Young Community Schools for nine years. I know we have amazing teachers and we even have more amazing students and I see a lot of them here tonight. We as educators are gonna show up every day and we're gonna do what's best for our kids. Today, I'm gonna urge you to do the right thing and do what's best by helping our ma, our district to maintain a place that employees want to work and want to bring our kids to learn. I would ask you to please direct Chris Woods and the bargaining team to work with YEA to settle the agreement and make a contract soon. Class size is one of the biggest concerns that are on our minds this year. We will not be meeting state guidelines. Currently, all grade levels are increasing student numbers. We know as educators it's difficult to meet all the needs of all the students. Having extra kids in our classroom make it even more difficult. Since our COVID epidemic, we have faced so many more challenges. Our kids have less independence, they depend on us a lot more. They have holes, developmental holes, academic holes. The workload to navigate this new normal that we've had has been very strenuous and semi-exhausting. Um, teachers finally now we see a light. We begin to figure this out, we've worked together, we've had these meaningful relationship. We build cultures of hope and belonging. Having more students in a class might just set us back. If the numbers are consistent with the enrollment from years past, I can have up to twenty-five kindergarteners this year. With that, it's like putting cats in pantyhose. If you've ever tried to do that, it's a little bit difficult. But smaller class sizes are gonna allow us to fill up the gaps and form much more needed connections as well as challenge the kids who need the extra talent. Oftentimes those kids do fall behind. We wanna make sure that the kids who are struggling get the resources that they need. Teacher workload will increase. Our teacher efficiency will also be hard to perform at the level that I know all of these educators here today can do. We wanna retain our educators and not give them a reason to leave. We don't want the grass to be greener on the other side. Additionally, there are suggested caseload changes for special education. Planning paperwork, things like this are required. Meetings, overage pay, this is important to us. It's imperative to compensate our educators committed to providing all of our kids with quality education in every program in every building in this district. With the district proposals, I will make my, uh, less money this year. Our prices continue to rise and this goes without discussion as we know the cost of living is not going to decrease. The state lots of district money for teachers and the cost of living. I chose to stay here and I do choose to stay here, knowing I can make a difference, believing in all these kids and these teachers that I work with. My daughter and son deserve teachers who are valued and they feel like they belong. I ask you, elected officials, to urge Chris to do the right thing and reach an agreement to fix these issues that are affecting our students and our staff. Let's work together to keep Young Community Schools exactly that, community. Make it solid again, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Catherine Cole. I'm a teacher at, uh, Ridge Lane Middle School. I've been in Young Community Schools for sixteen-plus years. I student taught here, I've done my entire career here. Um, I'm a parent. I have two students, uh, sons who graduated from Young High School and went all the way through from kindergarten all the way up. And I'm a voting constituent. As a representative of YEA, I'm the co-president. Uh, I want to make the board aware of several of their five strategic plan goals that are not reflected in the collective bargaining proposal from your selected bargaining team. I'm going to focus on one of those, but you can see them, there's four of them on the wall behind you. Um, and the one that's missing from the wall, but it's on the website, says, "We will recruit and retain a committed and highly trained workforce." Having a committed and highly trained workforce is what is best for students. They need consistency, they need relationships with their teachers and the staff, and they need highly qualified teachers to learn from. To do this, we are asking that you, the school board, direct Superintendent Woods and the bargaining team to ensure that the state allocated funds, regionalization and cost of living adjustments be used to fairly compensate certified staff for the work that is expected of them. Back in May, I implored this board to keep cuts away from the classroom. Instead, one hundred twenty-two certified teachers received RIF notices and more than one hundred paraeducators. In the end, forty-six certified positions were eliminated, but we lost more than that with people who decided, I'm not valued and I'm not gonna stay. This cut of forty-six teachers saved the district more than four million dollars alone. Superintendent Woods has claimed that seven positions were cut from district administration. What was not made clear was that three of the seven were certified instructional coaches and part of the reduction of course of forty-six positions. Three more were building assistant principals who are student-facing and not in the central office. Only one position was a central office administrative position and it was a coordinator who resigned. Our superintendent claims recently that the district office is lead and could not possibly do everything that needs to be done with less. This is in direct contradiction to conversations that he had with YEA leadership, including myself, where he described the district office as richly staffed and that there would be deep cuts. Based on what we see, the priorities of Young Community Schools have been made clear. Protect the micromanagement of educators by keeping central office coordinators, directors and assistant directors, while creating increased workload and class size and less support at the building level where dis, direct student contact occurs every day. We work with our students every day to teach them how to be a part of a community. We are Young Community Schools and as we've heard many times from this board, that's intentional, it was changed. Community happens when there are strong and qualified staff who are not overworked, underpaid and treated as a resource to be used and thrown away. Please direct your bargaining team and Superintendent Woods to settle a fair contract for the hundreds of certified staff who came to Young Community Schools to be a part of a community, not just a district. Thank you.
Last one is Noel.
Good evening, and I'm addressing from the eyes of the students who have been repeatedly overlooked by our school. We have lost many of our mentors, friends, teachers. And these people aren't as often recognized by the community because they don't have large titles. But our concert pianist with the Young High School Choir is gone and she was a very large part of our program. She gave us strength, confidence, she showed us kindness and compassion. And while we do have our director, she always was there to support when he was busy with other students. She was a necessary piece of our program and we've completely lost her and we don't know what to do without her. Not only that, but we've lost all three of our advisors and directors in the theater program. We're all afraid of what's going to happen because we have no answers. We've been ignored and we're not the students that are often seen. Our strength comes from our educators. And without our educators, we don't have strength. We don't have voices or confidence or courage. They are the people that bring that to us and teach us that. Without that, we fail and we struggle. Without that, we fail and we struggle and we will not succeed. This school is built on community and this town has been built on that. And now we're having that taken away from us because of things we can't control. And the students are feeling these losses very deeply. We've lost teachers that have taught us how to be ourselves and how to be strong intellectuals. Now, we look for guidance where there is none and we have to look in our own community between students where we should have an adult to show us the way.
Thank you. Two board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, new business.
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
These are up to date as of 12 today. Trying to move as quickly as we can to get these to your formal approval before school starts. So we will have more coming, but these are as of 12 o'clock today.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Acceptance of gifts, Dylan.
We have aye, hope. Phil is here. Phil, here. Okay. We have a very special donation and I don't know if Jason, you want to share a little bit about it?
Here he comes. Here he comes.
Mr. Ogil, Will, Mr. Phil Ogil.
And I'll let them share a little bit before we get a picture.
First of all, my name is Jason Rockwell. I'm the vice president of Total Sports Development. I'm also a community member. I'm also a teacher, coach, a parent, a taxpayer, homeowner, all the above. Yes and a levy, et cetera. I made a note here just to talk about the donation and so I will represent Total Sports Development when I read this. So members of the Yelm Community School Board reps, my colleagues and educators, the call to action in regards to elimination of the C-team sports in our high school was beyond what I had imagined. Your answer to the loss of programs and what it would mean to our students, your neighbors, or simply how it can change the landscape of athletics here at Yelm, it has been heard, not only in this room, but in the Seattle newspapers, King Five News, Cairo, Q13, all over the state. The TSD team, we're very proud of our community, proud to know that the community was behind our mission to support athletics. Our desperation for this solution was matched with the community empathy. They matched our compassion and they put kids first, ultimately. School board members, administrators, and voting members of the community, we did surpass the financial needs of operating C-teams for one year at the high school level. But this is not a long-term solution. This was a fundraiser that was a huge undertaking, driven by a very shared, vigilant effort, high level of stress, but ultimately a deep desire to see kids successful. As we present these funds to the school board and to the hundreds of athletes that we have and the future athletes that choose Yelm as their future, we hope moving forward that Yelm Community Schools and our community as a whole will work together on a plan to adequately fund Yelm students' education, activities, and athletic opportunities in the future. Thank you.
I'd just say a couple of things about these three gentlemen. They came and met with me before decisions were even made about cuts as we were wrestling with decisions and you guys were considering information. They were already waiting and ready to step up because they know the value and the importance of extracurricular activities in our community. And so I can't say enough about the work that they did and how quickly they did it. And they also came in and said, "We want to know exactly what it's going to cost to restore high school C-team sports." And so that's why you see the exact amount of $44,551. And this will be going directly to restore the C-team programs at the high school. That'll be towards stipends, towards officials, and towards game management specific to those programs. And I commend them for the job that they did. I know they're tired because they are also coaching. They are also have jobs and families. And this was a tremendous undertaking and I appreciate their willingness to step up. And you saw how it spread. Who would imagine that we would have three news outlets coming down to cover these stories, which is pretty amazing. And so you guys accepting this gift tonight gives us the authority tomorrow to start posting positions and restoring those programs. And as we told them, we're going to be very transparent about how these dollars are spent right back into these programs. And so I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done and the time and energy you guys have given. I know how much you care about our kids and our community. So thank you and hopefully we can get a picture.
Well, I'll add one thing. There was a couple of questions basically to us as a team and one of them was about C-team sports on the junior high level. There's a true reason why we didn't undertake that. If somebody else could, that's great. But we also found that there's other avenues. To give you an example, I have 400 kids at practice right now with TCYF football. And so there are other avenues when we start talking about junior high-level sports. Whereas when we talk about high school, there isn't another avenue for us to put those kids. It's not like I could go out and start a new tackle football program. I could, but it'd be very expensive. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is the public has really cried out to us is transparency. So Chris, I thank you for that. We as a 501(c)(3), it is, I have to spend the money towards what I told the public that I was raising the money for. So I appreciate that transparency. Thank you guys so much because it's, I could go to jail. I'd rather not. But I could, you know, there's some legality behind that. So I appreciate you guys using the funds the way they're directed.
Do you guys mind coming around for a picture?
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, awesome.
Well.
Are you gonna?
Well, you know, if I was more intelligent.
Jason, you want to come on?
It's okay. They got the shirts on.
All right, that will be on Q13.
We want to thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
For the next, the next few, please, so carry over.
Yes, yes. Everything that we raised already.
Oh, great one. Great, great, great. Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Kids, really, thank you.
Yes.
You still need to take a motion.
Oh, we have so, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the gift, the donation from Total Sports Development Center for Yelm High School C-team sports in the amount of $44,551.
I second.
Any discussion? Big thank you.
Yeah.
Big thank you.
I mean, we've been talking for months about the heart of this community and we know that there is love there. It's been kind of hard to see over the last few months. But undertaking that from the start to every single person that donated, I mean, it showed. And we still got a lot more community involvement to have happen and I'm confident it's just a start. So thank you for that and the kids. Kids are going to appreciate every dollar of it.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, C, out of district travel. Yelm High School FFA to Indianapolis in October.
I move we approve.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so we have one student qualify, winning first place in state. And so she qualifies to go. And then we had, it's not a national competition. So we had a winning team that went and participated and did events throughout all the schools. And if you heard a little bit about it, they were the pollinators and teaching kids all about that. And so they're going to go back as a leadership opportunity with a parent volunteer who's going with us. So that is ways in which they were trying to make it affordable for everybody to go and so that we can continue to develop our student leaders. So they head back in October for that amazing opportunity.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Excuse me, Chris, can we open that door? And so they can hear it. I just spotted him. Not them. They wanted to hear us, but. Okay. That was out of district. Okay, so E, we have resolution. Adoption of the 2024-2025 budget.
I move we approve.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
I mean, for those that don't know, there's been hours and hours and hours of discussion on this topic. I mean, I've, I got sent 482 pages to review in three days on top of my data job. I did my due diligence and went through line by line.
I can vouch for that.
It's been real good all week. It's, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, for those that know me, I always question government's ability to fund, government's ability to do anything right, to be honest. And what this has reiterated is we cannot physically cut. We could cut every single thing we are legally allowed to cut by law, by mandate, by CBA, by other contractual agreements, and we are still going to be multimillion dollars in the hole. It is physically impossible to balance the budget with the way this system is operating in this state. And that doesn't even factor in inflation. That doesn't factor in anything else. The system is diseased as a whole and we're in the spotlight right now. And it doesn't make any of these cuts easy. It doesn't make any of these conversations easy, but that is what it is. It is physically impossible to balance the budget. I do this for a living, so I'm not full of crap. It's physically impossible. So I mean, we're approving the budget. It shows we're in the hole. We're in the hole. And it's impossible to get out of it without levy funding unless something changes in the state.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Jennifer, for all of the, we all received that and it doesn't make for evening reading committee. No, I have mine. Anyway. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. F, resolution, general funds budget extension.
I move we approve.
Second.
Discussion. We beat up those numbers so badly, they just don't change. No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so G, Yelm Community Administrative Organizational Chart, 2024-2025.
So that is what we've shared with you is we need to do some reorganizing duties and structure here at the district office as a result of reductions. So that was just sharing with you how we're going to be reorganizing.
Did I have a motion?
Sorry, I think I jumped.
Well, I guess I did. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. H, interlocal cooperative agreement with Educational Service, Clover Park Technical College, 2024 through 2026. And what a motion.
I move we approve.
I second.
And this is something that we do every year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then I is interlocal agreement, regional education agreement, state of Washington Department of Children, Youth, and Families.
I move we approve.
Second.
Discussion?
That is, allows us to have a partnership with DCYF, another resource and to provide services for students and families.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Colliers and payroll.
I move we approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Board Member King and I went through the vouchers before the meeting and I recommend approval.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Facilities report, Public Works.
I move we approve.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, I'm going to start out by commenting a little bit what Jennifer was talking about earlier. The new video billboards are installed. We got them powered up. They were quite the challenge. At two of our older schools, we had to do a lot of digging and trenching to repair the wiring that the tree roots had destroyed and over the years, but they're ready to go. The office staff, I think, got their email for their individual training on it today. Hopefully, we'll see them lit up next week. So four went in. Let's see, we had Lacamas, we put a new one in because that one actually overheated and melted. It was an original one. Ridge Lane got a new video billboard, Milpon and Fort Stevens. Milpon and Fort Stevens have the old manual ones where you got to go out and put the letters and numbers and all that in. So be a new addition to the system or to the school. The nice thing about it, they've got individual site control. It's web-based. Or you can do mass messaging right out of the district office and it goes out to all of them. Pretty nice setup. Your board packet contains this past month's public works projects, completed public works projects. I'm here to answer any questions you may have and recommend for approval. As you can see, there's a lot of electrical work here. We've been busy. An electrical nightmare.
But we didn't have anything from the storm the other night or?
Found one today. We think we lost the lighting control board for Ridge Lane Middle School. So I'm scrambling.
Except for the past week.
Yeah, I'm scrambling right now to get some lights up and going. Every time we get almonds, the music room, which is the stage, and the outdoor gym that's dark. We had our annual meeting in the dark this morning. We made it through it though.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Chris.
Debbie, I just want to say big thanks to Chris. He has been working short-staffed all summer and even in the spring. He, uh, has been working, uh, short-staffed, uh, all summer and even in the spring, and, um, Chris is, uh, available twenty-four seven. Um, and even on his days off, he, uh, comes into work, which, um, I don't understand, but he does. But, uh, I can't say enough about what Chris does and.
He moved out of town.
Yes. You're, you're too close to word. And a lot of projects, uh, to manage, uh, with less staff, and he's done outstanding job. So, thank you.
Financial reports. We don't have any.
Those were all part of budget adoption. I mean, you probably.
Well, yeah, and unfortunately, the county treasurer has a new system in place, and they typically post our county treasurer's report by about the third for July, and we haven't seen it yet. So, we cannot do a budget status this month. We're gonna be two next month.
And no student enrollment report?
I'll just, uh, comment on that. Uh, here, uh, working with schools, uh, to get, uh, regular updates, enrollment changes daily, um, we are, uh, responding to those as quickly as we can and meeting, um, frequently to discuss those. We do have some spots where, uh, we're gonna need to address, but, um, uh, that changes daily, um, with some, uh, reductions and some adds. Uh, so, uh, several times a week, we are sitting down to look at each and every classroom across the district.
Uh, board comments. We'll start with Director Mr. Casey.
I mean, I, I said a lot of what I had to say regarding budget, state funding, and you've heard me say that multiple times. So, I've, I've done there. I mean, I do wanna reiterate a lot of what I've heard today. I appreciate the, a lot of people who are showing up here today who are concerned, who wanna put the kids first. I mean, that's, that's all any of us are here for. I mean, we're unpaid elected officials who spend our time trying to put the kids first. We're volunteer coaches. I mean, that, that's what this community is about. This community is full of people who are willing to put fundraisers together and donate. He saved kids' sports. It's full of people who are willing to start nonprofits to benefit the kids in this community. It's full of great volunteers, and it's gonna take all of us to keep working together to get out of this hole that we're in. But I'm confident we'll get there, but we have to keep working together and not fighting in order to get there, so.
Um, and to piggyback with, uh, what Casey said, you know, I saw the, the fundraising that was, that happened in a week. You know, sixty thousand dollars within a week. Um, the community stepped up for that, and that's really cool to see. And I know the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is gonna look different with the cuts that have already been approved. Um, and I hope us as a community will rally around the students and the staff with that, um, and the parents for that. Um, because my kids go to school, you know, both my two kids' teachers are no longer in the district. Um, so I just hope that we just really support the students going into this school year.
You're glad, I'm glad you're sitting right there, Frank. Thank you. You haven't failed. Hey. Denise.
Um, we had a day of, uh, board reports, and so, uh, that was a, uh, it's always a real interesting day to get a real good feel of how last year went and, and our hopes for this, uh, coming year. So, um, I really enjoyed that, and then, uh, uh, Debbie and I stopped in and, uh, spent some time with our booster clubs. The beginning of the year, their, kind of their kickoff for the year, so that was really nice, uh, to do that. And, um, um, I just wanna again thank our community for coming together um, and for the organizers, uh, to do the donation for the C-Team sports because it wasn't something that we entered in too lightly to cut that. It just, I mean, it really hurt each one of us deeply. There's people that might not think so, but it did. It was not something we entered in too lightly. And for this community to step up and fill that void for our kids is wonderful, and it's something I don't think I'll ever forget, um, that was, that took place here. And, um, I also wanna thank those of you that stepped up and spoke tonight. It was really appreciated. I'm glad that you did. I listened to you. I took your name down, and I appreciated you stepping forward. It's important, believe it or not, for us to always hear from both sides. There's two sides to every story, and so thank you for coming forward and letting us hear your, what you think. So, thank you.
And all I have to say is thank you all for being here, and the one thing that I think we all have in common is we want what's best for kids, and the only way that we're going to reach that is if we work together. And that means give and take from both sides. Appreciate all of you, um, speaking up, and we're here to listen, and thank you.
Uh, a couple of quick things. Um, it's been, uh, pretty exciting to, to hear from a lot of people uh, wanting to give back to this community and wanting to help restore, uh, some of the cuts we've had to make. I had a phone call, um, with a retired gentleman from Anacortes, uh, the other day, and he said, "Where do I send money?" Um, he saw the story on King Five, and what stood out to him was two of our students talking about um, how important the development of being on C-Team was for them to then, uh, work hard to get to JV, then diversity. And, um, it was just a neat conversation to have, and, um, also met with a couple other organizations this week that reached out and would like to, uh, help. And so I, I think that's really encouraging, um, that we've got many people around that wanna contribute and help our students, and, uh, it's just, uh, it's nice to hear that. Um, thank you to all of you for, um, the many hours. This is three nights in a row. Um, I, I appreciate you putting in the time and, um, the detail. Um, and, uh, the last thing I think is, is, uh, I can't say it any better than, than Matt did this evening, um, how important it is for us, uh, to come together as a community and work together on solving these challenges. And, uh, it really does have to be us working together, um, to make it happen, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.